It's starting. Stand for the pledge, please. All right, thank you. We'll call this meeting to order. First order of business is our meeting minutes from the last meeting. Has everyone reviewed the meeting minutes? Is there any questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman, if we could just take a quick roll.
Oh, roll call, yes.
No worries.
I'm sorry.
No worries.
Yes, please do a roll call.
Chair Carmelo Aquindo. Vice Chair Philip Landry.
President.
Russell Alexander. Absent. Nanette Douglas.
Present.
Dawn Grigsby.
Present.
Dawn Streeter.
Present.
Daisy Snyder.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum, and Ms. Streeter and Ms. Snyder will be voting members this evening.
Thank you. Okay, so now we can move on to the approval of the minutes. Does anybody have any comments or questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve the minutes of the last meeting. A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And I'm in favor as well. All right. First order of business is ordinance number...
Some presentation.
Okay, we have a presentation.
No, they're gonna do that after.
Oh, they're gonna do that after?
They're gonna do it after.
Yeah, we're requesting to move the presentation of the new business to after the action items this evening.
Okay. No problem. All right, so then we'll move to the first action item, which is ordinance number 2024-42. Seventeenth Street Townhomes, and that is CPA 23-00007. Are these... Do we want to read these together, or...
Yes, please, if you can, for the record, both of them.
Okay.
We're gonna do one presentation.
Okay, and then also ordinance number 2024-43, which is ZMA 23-00008.
Good afternoon, Council. Members of the Plan Commission. My name is Dagmaris Tagara, Deputy Director for Community Development. This evening, in front of you, is a request for a plant amendment and zoning amendment for a property located corner of Michigan Street, between Seventeenth Street and Russell Street. Staff is recommending approval. The existing feature line use designation for this property is medium density residential, and the proposed feature line use designation is high density residential. The existing zoning for this property is R2, which allows single and two-family dwellings, and the proposed zoning is R4, which allow multifamily dwellings as maximum intensity. The development is compatible with the surrounding area, and there's no adverse impacts into the city's facility. This map depicts the surrounding properties, which depict the high-density residential. It is surrounding this property, and the zoning is also applicable in regards to R3 or R4 surrounding the property. The staff is recommending approval of ordinance 2024-42 and ordinance number 2024-43. The applicant is here to answer any questions. He also has a presentation for the board.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to speak? Thank you.
Hi, I'm John Delula with Diamond Homes. I currently have the property over there on Seventeenth and Michigan. There's eight lots that are single there, and I just plan to do some, like, triplexes or, you know, some... You'll see in the picture here, right there, along Michigan Avenue, where I have some reloaded garages and stuff like that in the back. Trying to make it look a little better. And right now, I have eight lots. I'm only gonna probably do 12 units. So it's only gonna be... Even though it's high-density, a high-density residential is 18 units per acre. I don't have an acre there. I only have, like, three-quarters of an acre. But since there's eight lots, I'm only gonna get, like, probably four to six more units, you know, to do that nice of a product. You know, I have to get more units. That's the only reason why I'm here, is to do that nice of a product, you know? And you'll see the buildings there. Yeah, that's pretty much it there. That's it.
Can you put it back, please, to the overall...
Which one?
Where you show all of the...
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's just a concept, you know, it's not exact, yeah.
And how many units are you targeting?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah. I can only get... In the max, I can only get is 14 anyway, you know, because the land is only, like, .80.
And how much parking?
Whatever I need to, you know, whatever the code tells me I need to do. I'm not sure, you know, this is just a concept. You know what I'm saying? I have to, you know, comply with the city ordinances, the standards and stuff. I think there's... I think on these have to be, like, four and a half parking spots per unit, I think. If it's apartments, it's less, but, like, the triplexes, I think, is four and a half. And they'll be reloaded, so there won't be any driveways, you know?
Okay, so theoretically, push the building as close to the property line as you can?
Exactly. Yeah, I just wanna try to make it a nice feel. I've been building here for 27 years, and just have a nice, you know, when you go down Michigan, Russell, or Seventeenth... Down Seventeenth Street, they have a walkway for the kids. You know, I'm gonna probably put another sidewalk on the property, you know, in the easement there. I'm gonna take it out of the road, put it on the property. So there'd be a sidewalk all the way around Russell, Seventeenth Street, you know, have it like a nice feel, like celebration, you know, you go down the road, street lamps and...
Which side were you thinking that you would move the sidewalk?
Seventeenth Street, right now, they have a sidewalk, but they have it in the street almost. I don't know if you ever go down there, but it's like in the street almost, you know? It's like the curb is here, and the sidewalk's like here in the street. Yeah, so I'm gonna take it out of there and put it on to the... Over the curb, you know, so if a car hits the curb, it won't hit a kid or something, you know? I'm gonna take it out of there, but... But just, you know... So there won't be any drives along the Michigan Avenue. You know, it'd just be nice, you know, nice-looking, you know, kind of exteriors.
Can we go back to the other one that showed the lots around it? No, back.
Sure.
Back, not forward, back.
Like this, or...
No, keep going back.
Sure. Oops, sorry. Let me go back to the front. Here you go.
There we are.
Yeah, so there's high-density to the east and west, and all surrounding, even that you don't see colors, is all medium-density in that area. You know, high-density in that areas, you know, there's three schools there, you know? It'd be good walking, you know, to the schools and come back and...
So the high-density that is to the left side over there?
Yes, to the west.
It's high-density, but is there anything actually there?
Yes. Yeah, there's all...
Apartments?
No, there's duplexes and triplexes.
Okay, duplex and triplex.
Yes.
Is considered high-density?
Yes.
And then I know these apartments on this side, on the other side of Michigan.
Yeah, and the big P is to the south, below the P, the professional, is all apartments.
Right, Michigan Avenue apartments.
Yes, and then there's apartments also to the right. There's like two sets of apartments, which my product is gonna be better than that.
Can we go back a couple slides to the current zoning map?
Yes, yep.
Is that better?
Yeah, I mean, I go by that every single day, and I'm just kind of trying to picture additional units there.
Yeah, so there's gonna be... Right now, I could do eight single-family homes, right? Actually, I'm in medium-density, so I could do more than that. The thing is, to do a better product, to do, like, the looking product where I do reloaded, I have to get a few more units, or I won't be able to do a cost-effectively. You know what I mean? To spend the money to do it, to make it look good on that corner. Because that corner is, to me, you know, I've been here forever, it needs something nice there.
It's a messy corner.
Exactly. So if I do something nice, where I could do street lamps all around there, and nice facade exteriors, and then all reloaded in the back, you know, I think it'll be super-nice looking over there, all the way around the whole, all the three corners, you know, in my opinion, you know?
So the...
Sure, good.
The yellow in the picture, then, is other medium-density?
It's all medium-density, yes. Yeah. And even if I go to high-density, remember, I can't do 18 units. I'm only gonna... The max I could do is 14, so... But I'm only gonna probably do 12. You know, depending on parking and, you know, constraints like that, I might get less, I don't know, you know?
And these are townhomes? You consider it townhomes?
There'll be triplexes.
Triplexes.
Yeah, so, yeah.
And two-story?
Yes, it has to be. Yeah, they have to be.
A triplex is where you have three units in one building.
Yes.
It's one building, but it has three separate, you know, units that people can buy or...
Yeah, it's sort of like a... It's sort of like a townhome, but since it's not fee simple, where the land goes with it, you know what I mean? It's... But it's like, if you live there, it's exactly like a townhome.
Okay, thank you.
And I do, just for the record, one of those that John had called me earlier to try and answer any questions about it earlier today, which we didn't have time to talk, but I just wanted to disclose that you had called to.
Sure. Yeah, I usually like to try to get with council. I already met with council and, you know, tried to tell everybody what I'm trying to do.
Any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, sir.
All right.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
At this time, we would like to open up for public comment. Is anybody here to speak about this, either of these ordinances? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. Have you filled out a slip? All right, you'll need to fill out a slip. You can do that after.
Yeah.
But just please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Taylor Keegan, and I live at 720 Seventeenth Street. I live right across from the plot in question. Me and my husband just bought this house just last year, last June, and we bought it for the convenience of the location. Both of us have started working at the sheriff's office. And we also like the area. It's quiet, it's far enough away from the highway where it still doesn't feel like a city. But I just think that building an apartment complex on that plot of land is a bad idea. It's not consistent with the surrounding areas. I think it will compromise the existing infrastructures, like the roads and the public utilities. The roads in that area really are not the greatest. And like you stated about the sidewalk, half of Seventeenth Street does not have a sidewalk. So the half that my house is on doesn't have a sidewalk. And I think adding more traffic and more, just the population in general, will endanger the children, and I do honestly like your thought of bringing the sidewalk in. I do, you know? You know, I came in here totally dismissing the idea. So you did surprise me, I will admit.
So, I'm sorry. That's all right, ma'am. If you just could direct your comments to the commission, and the applicant will have a chance to respond to your comments.
And then, there have been studies that show that an increase in housing density will decrease the property value. And that's just a big concern for me and my husband, because this is our first house. We've already put $15,000 of improvements into that house. So just to hear that our property is, may potentially be worth less than what it is, is concerning for us. And I just think that it'll decrease the life for many of us that live in that area, because traffic will increase, noise, pollution, and crime will also increase. And as I've stated, you know, since we do work at the sheriff's office, we do see the crime, and there are quite a few DUIs already in that area. And I think that just increasing the population will also increase the potential DUIs. And people do drive extremely fast already down that road, and especially since it is in a school zone, that's also very concerning. And I also just want to say that I have started a petition to halt this development, and in less than 24 hours, it has already received 38 signatures. So I just want to say that I do think that it will directly... As someone who... This will directly impact, because I do live right across the street from it, that I would strongly urge you to deny the application.
And you're a single-family dwelling?
Yes.
Now, I know when we were looking at the zoning, it was a lot of medium-density and high-density, but there are, I guess I'm assuming, since you have one, there are some single-family dwellings around.
Yes.
Yeah, down Seventeenth Street, and on her side of the street, there are all single-family homes. Other side of the street, there are more of these multifamily homes.
Ma'am, do you have anything else you'd like to share? All right, thank you.
Please turn the sheet into our clerk, yes, please, thank you.
Do we have anyone else for the public comment? Okay, at this time, we're gonna close the public comment, and then I'll allow you to come back up and address any questions or concerns.
Yeah, I appreciate your concerns, but where she lives at is, there is duplexes over there, and all surrounding my property, there is duplexes. There is some single-family, but there's much more duplexes and apartments around my property than there is single-family. And right now, I currently can build eight single-family homes, right? So to do a nicer product, to where I don't have to have driveways all along Seventeenth Street, Russell Street, you know, and the way it's gonna look, it won't look as nice as this product, you know?
And you're remembering this being 12 now with the townhome-type structures?
Yeah, that's it, it's only four more units. So it's not like a whole bunch of more units, it's four, but to do... The reason why is because the cost. You know, to do something that's reloaded, where you have this nice look going all the way around three corners, this costs a lot.
And it's only a differential of four than if you had done single-family dwellings, correct?
Yes, yeah, I could do single-family dwell, I'm sure, but I could even do more than that, because I'm in medium-density. I'm not in low-density, I'm medium-density. So I could do more than that. It's just a few more units, you know? Even in medium, I'm allowed to do 10 units. I'm only doing 12.
Okay.
See what I'm saying?
What is the price point? And are they all gonna be exactly the same in the triplex? Or will one be bigger than another, or how do you have this?
Yes, so we haven't designed it yet, but the look is kind of the main thing. The look of the facade, if you see the front of the units right there, see? So that's how nice that building looks. I mean, it's just... It's only three units there. It looks like more, but it's not. It's just the way it's designed. And all the garages are in the back.
And so the plan is that for each of the, you know, sets of homes will be in sets of three, like?
Yeah, see, remember, I'm taking... I have eight lots, so I'm taking two lots, putting them together. Okay? So that triplex is gonna fit on two lots.
Got it.
So I could build two single-family homes, and only adding one more home to make that look like that, to put reloaded.
And the reload's gonna come off of Russell?
And Seventeenth. Well, it's gonna be a... If you see the road here, I'll show you the road. Yeah, see the road through Seventeenth?
So that's something that'll get created, that road?
Yeah, I already talked to the city about that, about creating that. Mm-hmm. Yeah, so there'll be one road where they have parking in the back. So instead of eight driveways, I have one road.
You... I'm sorry, I think you misunderstood my question. You're entering the property in two places, Seventeenth Street and Russell.
Yeah.
But the reloads to each of the individual units are within that...
Within, yeah, it's reloaded, yes. Yeah, so it's gonna be... Right, and that's the purpose of doing this design.
So again, on Seventeenth Street, sorry to interrupt you, but on Seventeenth Street, everybody's gonna just be looking at the front of the houses, or their look, not necessarily be looking at their garages, or have people coming in and off of that, only on one...
Right, so if you look at this drawing here, like, one triplex, I could actually build two homes on each one anyway. So instead of doing that, I could do a triplex building where, you know, yes, I can... It'd be cost-effective for me, then I can do that, to spend the money in the roads and, you know...
So you say you haven't... So they're probably gonna be all equal in size?
Yes, yes.
Like, two bedrooms, three bedrooms, or whatever?
Three-bedroom, two baths.
Three-bedroom, two baths.
It will not decrease, it only will increase the value of anything that's on.
And your price point, guessing, right now?
You know, probably close to, you know, $375, $380, somewhere around there.
So these are not rentals, these are homes for purchase, correct?
I'm not sure yet. You know, they might be, they might be, you know, for sale, you know, but I'm not sure right yet. You know, because there's the schools are right there, too, so I don't know. I might keep the whole thing for myself and rent to teachers and students, whoever. You know, there's the three schools right there. You know, the kids could walk right to school from this place. So I might do that, too, you know?
How would the rentals go?
I don't even... Right now, I don't know. I haven't even decided the product yet, you know what I mean? It's just a concept, you know, but that's what I would like to do, you know? The thing is, you know, right now, like I said, I could do two single-family homes on one triplex lot, you know what I mean? So this way, if I combined them together, yeah, I could get one more unit, but I can anyway, you know, so... But this way, I could do reloaded stuff, you know? I could do a better-looking product, you know? Instead of having four driveways on Russell, four driveways on Seventeenth, and then on Michigan, when you drive down Michigan, you only get to see sides of houses. You know what I mean? This way, you drive down Michigan, you're gonna see some nice two-story elevations, you know, with some street lamps, and when people walk by, it'll look really nice.
And just as a point of information, I mean, multiplexes don't necessarily impact the values of a home, and also, the market always dictates what the rent or the price of the house is gonna be. So it would all depend on once you finished it.
Sure. I mean, you see the apartments to the west, east of this, right across the street? Go look at them. Or the apartments to the Michigan apartments. I mean, this is like, really an upscale project, in my opinion.
I just have a question for city staff. So I know right now, we're only voting on comprehensive plan amendment for the zoning plan amendment, right? But at what point in time would the builder be required to submit the preliminary master plan?
Just a couple of things. As you said, the request right now is for the comprehensive plan amendment and the rezoning. Anything that you're seeing today is strictly conceptual, and it has to meet the city codes. Whether he can fit the 12 that he wants or not, that's gonna be at the time of design. It all depends on the product that he's going to create. If he's going to create platted lots, which each unit will be sold individually, then he will go through the subdivision process, which would allow them to submit for a preliminary subdivision plan, which goes up to city council for approval, and then after that, the construction plans and the plat that goes out to city council. If he wishes to do it as a multifamily type, all he needs to submit after this request is a site development plan, which is approved by staff. But like I said, it all depends on the type of the product that he submits, and whether he can fit everything that he wants to fit in there, is according to the Land Development Code.
Thank you.
And if I could, just for the commission, the issues are land use and zoning, which, again, that ties to your sole narrow focus, coupled with what's been presented in feedback and comments, is the Land Development Code, the 16 criteria that uses your roadmap to come to your decision on each of these. It's a big... It's still staying big picture. Some of the questions, very natural, are very specific, and they're a little bit out front of where we are in the process this evening. And for those in attendance, again, reminder that the commission, this is an advisory body making a recommendation to council. There's no final action here tonight. This is simply a recommendation from the commission, in whatever direction it is to the council. And this will come before council... When do we know?
August 8.
In August, August 8. So, again, anyone that's interested will have a chance at that council meeting to be heard, if they wish. They've taken public comments, sir, yes. It's up to the chair and the commission.
We'll entertain your public comments, sir.
Sure.
Will you allow him to come up? Did you fill out a form?
I did not, I got here.
You can fill out the form afterwards, but please state your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
All right, my name's Mark Prokuny, and I live in the corner of 1800 Michigan, right on the corner of Russell and Michigan. And any increase in density is ludicrous, okay? That is a terrible, terrible place to be 10 months out of the year, as far as traffic and congestion go. I cannot get to my house, you're adding... As he says, it's only four more. Well, that's probably eight people at least, four more cars, eight more cars, I don't know what it is. We can't afford a single more car in that area. And as far as we might rent it, we might sell it, I don't... I'm not comfortable with that. I'm a homeowner, I've lived there 37 years, things have changed a lot. I would like to think that my quality of life matters, okay? And that's not gonna improve my quality of life. Russell Street on that map looks nice and wide and easily passable. 10 months out of the year, I gotta put stakes on the outside of my fence, so parents can't park on that side, so traffic can go down Russell Street. There's a house down on the corner where the cars stick out in the road. It's one lane. Nobody's ever addressed that. There's issues that need to be addressed before this recommendation can go through, okay? I invite all of you, after August 12th, to come. Look what I'm talking about. Traffic is stopped on Seventeenth Street, it's stopped on Michigan Avenue. Many times other day, I can't go home. And I know it's not your fault, it's the school's fault, and I already spoke to superintendent, there's nothing he can do, his responsibility is inside the fence lines, okay? But it is terrible. I'm frustrated. It also does not look like everything else around it. I like the front of it, it looks modern, three, two stories, whatever, but it doesn't look like everything around it. I got a little cracker house on the corner, it's gonna make mine look terrible. Well, it's gonna make mine look terrible, too. And also, all the people you put in there, all the renters you're gonna put in there, okay? The streetlights you talk about, the lighting...
Sir, if you could just make your comments to the commission, sir. Your comments are for the commission.
Right, the lighting he's gonna put in there is gonna affect my property, okay? It's nice now, I can go outside, it's not lit up. There's no issues with cars coming and going. Excuse me?
Sir, sir, just make your points to the commission, sir, and then you can conclude.
Right. Again, whoever, the 15 points I saw, the advisory, whoever, they don't know. They haven't been there. Again, before you make a decision, I invite you to come by there and see what I'm talking about. It does affect traffic, which is terrible. I have a lot more to say, but now I'm frustrated.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Please be sure to turn in a slip for our clerk, ma'am, sir.
All right, just checking, nobody else with any other comments? Okay, thank you, we closed public comment at this time.
Where is the school in relation to this property?
So the school is further south down Michigan.
About two blocks, about an hour block away.
Well, there's actually...
There's two schools.
There's three. You have St. Cloud High School to the left there, you see where it says Bulldog? And then to the right down Michigan, if you were to go past the end of the image there where the scale is, that's where you'll see, you have St. Cloud Elementary and St. Cloud... I'm sorry, St. Cloud Middle School.
And fellow commission members, I mean, those schools have been there for a long time. I went to those schools, so you know, they were there for a very long time. So it's... There is a need in our community for additional housing. It doesn't feel good, same thing's happening in my neighborhood. The reality is, is those schools and the idea of having triplexes or multiplexes or things for people, affordable housing, et cetera, is a reality. And if there... And if somebody has a vacant lot and they can do something to make money on it, that's their... That's why we live in America. So I'm just saying that that's... Those schools have been there for a very long time. And it is bad traffic, but I tell you, I go down that street every day. I'm a Seventeenth Street fan. So I'm just saying that I can see both sides definitely, how the face of St. Cloud has changed. I just can also see the need for that type of housing in that area.
Is there any other new construction in that area?
Yes. Yes, we've... There's new construction further down Michigan Avenue.
On the other side, though, not on that busy Seventeenth corner, yeah.
But further down towards, or towards an old... But further down towards, uh, or towards Nolte, river south.
Yeah, 'cause Michigan will dead-end in Nolte.
Yeah, the reality is that the, the land we're talking about here is already zoned as R2. So they can already put two-family, or two-family dwelling, and they're asking to revise it to R4, which is multifamily. So it's already zoned for duplexes, and the applicant is asking for triplexes essentially.
Okay.
Do we have any other comments, questions?
My only suggestion would be is to try to be as friendly as you can to neighbors and try to appease them as best you can. That's just personal opinion.
Well, I do have a question for you, please.
Yes.
When it comes to the lighting, is that going to affect the neighbors where it's, they have a glaring light in their bedroom window at night?
I was only doing the lighting for the benefit of the city, of the area. If the city doesn't want it, I won't put it. I don't have to put it. Be less money for me to put it. I was just doing it as a gesture to have lighting, so, you know, somebody's walking.
It's like, I had a neighbor that had his bright light and it was in my bedroom, I had to literally block my bedroom window off. So I'd just hate to see that happen to somebody else.
I'll give you the example, the city, I live on the corner of Florida and Lake Shore. They just did, the city just did the nice trail, Florida Trail. They just put, um, three street lamps on my, next to my property. I mean, it's like this much, I mean, away. But the lighting is so soft and nice, um, I don't think it would bother anyone. It doesn't bother me, you know, but, but if that's something, I could do something like that.
But it usually improves safety to have exterior lighting, so if this is about to go from a lot that had nothing on it to having something on it.
It's pretty, it's pretty dark, like, you know, you don't know just walking. But the city did really nice lighting along Florida, and that's something that I would probably do. It's really nice lighting, like carriage lights, you know, and they're really nice, like, not too bright, you know, where it would shine or, it doesn't bother me at all. I thought it would bother me, 'cause there's like three of them, three big ones, but it actually, it's a nice lighting, you know? And I don't have to put it, it's, it's just a suggestion, you know? And the reason why to do this project is, I have those people against it, but, you know, if I do the single-family, I'm gonna have four roads, right? Four driveways along Seventeenth and Russell. And like he said, there's a lot of traffic. If I do one road, there's one way in, there's not cars backed up in the driveway trying to back out on Seventeenth and back out on Russell. So that's what's gonna happen. If, if I get denied, or go to council and get denied, that's what's gonna go there.
Because either way, you're still gonna put eight houses regardless, correct?
Yes.
Somebody would, yeah, somebody will.
Hundred percent.
Right, so it's not like it's gonna remain an empty lot.
Yeah, so I'm trying to actually do something better. It's not that I'm trying to make more money, I'm trying to do something better. I could already make money, like, I go to really build eight single-family. The only reason I'm asking for more units is so that I could spend the money to do roads, to do, to do a nice facade in the front and do reloaded garages. That's the only reason why I'm here, you know? And I think this, right, this design I'm doing is, is gonna help the area, 'cause it's not gonna be an eye, you know, an eyesore. You know, just, you know, with all the traffic, at least I'll have, yeah, there's gonna be four more units, but at least I'll have one road going in, you know, instead of everybody trying to back out on Seventeenth and Russell, you know, in my opinion.
All right, thank you. All right, at this time, I'd like to call for a motion.
Um, I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Forty Two, based on, oops, sorry, that's the wrong line. Yeah, no, and the trans, wait a minute, I'm wrong.
Comprehensive plan amendment.
Yes, and, and the transmit of the Florida Department of Economic.
No.
That's not it.
No, the bottom one, uh, comprehensive plan amendment.
Uh huh, yeah, uh huh. And to transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for the intake and.
No, it's not, it's.
No.
That's not it?
The comprehensive plan amendment is the first one that we're doing, ordinance member.
Yeah, the issue before the commission is to consider the applicant getting a.
What's in that?
Consideration of the comprehensive plan for medium density to high density, so.
Isn't that the reason? Comprehensive plan amendment, right?
Let, plan.
So I'm, it's the right one?
There's not, there's not a transmittal component to this. This is only dealing with point seven, six acres of land.
This would just be based on the sixteen findings.
Isn't that what mine says?
Small scale.
I don't think this is the right thing.
Ah, oh, okay, I'm like, no, I'm like, I'm not tripping.
In a nutshell.
It wasn't white down.
I'm like, it's on my sheet, though, I didn't make that up, okay. I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Forty Two, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a first and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Motion passes. Next case, sir.
All right, um, do I have a motion for ordinance number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Four Three?
We all wanna that occasion. All right, I would like to make a motion to recommend the approval of ordinance number Twenty Twenty Four Dash Forty Three, based on the sixteen findings within the land development code.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Thank you.
Passes five zero?
Yes, motion passes five zero.
Those recommendations pass five zero, the matter will be heard on the eighth of August, is that right? Eighth of August before city council, where it will be addressed again, thank you, okay.
All right, so now we have a presentation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Good evening again, Dagmarie Segara, Deputy Director for Community Development. So this is the most awaited item that we've been working on for the past three years. And this is our first presentation workshop to this committee, to this commission. So to get your input on what we are, uh, potential changes to our future line use map. So here is, as you can see, this is our proposed future line use map. It might seem that there's not a lot of changes, but these are the changes that right now we are working with. The most significant changes are going to be in the areas that we had determined and classified as framework streets, which you're going to be, uh, there's, we're working on a master plan, a transportation master plan, that is going to designate roads that are going to be approved for a higher urban design. And so we concentrated our efforts in two areas, unemployment and commercial. Those were the two areas that we are focusing in this amendment. The areas that we are highlighting tonight were the most significant changes that have occurred, is employment designation has been created on the west side of the city, between the canal and the turnpike, uh, what we planners like to call the big triangle. So it's right between the canal and the turnpike, right near Tahoe. So that, that area has been designated for an employment, uh, future line use designation, which is a new future line designation that I'm gonna be talking about later in the presentation. The other significant employment designation is from Thirteenth Street to Tenth Avenue, or Tenth Street, sorry, Tenth Street, where Mercury Marine is located, that area surrounding. We believe that our MAC overlays are ready, go all the way further of, north of Thirteen, um, Tenth Street. So we, we believe that that area is a great area for redevelopment or for employment, encourage employment into this area, which we'll, we'll talk about it a little bit more later. Those are the biggest node. Now, the, we have created also a node on Nolte and Canal Creek Road, which is a mixed-use, a mix of commercial and employment. And I'm missing, yeah, okay, sorry. Yeah, I thought I was missing something. So in the big, that big gray circle in the middle is an employment nod right off of Nolte, which is by Fertig, uh, between Fertig and Nolte. The addition of a commercial designations were created along Florida Avenue and the Lake Shore Boulevard. We saw new expanded nodes near the downtown in Tenth Street. So those are the biggest changes that have occurred in the map. I just wanna remind the board that, or the commission, that this is a moving up, you know, these changes are constantly happening. So as we keep adding more properties and making additional changes, we'll provide those as information to you, the council, and the public. But this is the first preliminary draft. So let's talk about a little bit more of those specific areas, so some of those specific areas. So Florida Avenue, Florida Avenue is an area that we had already, we have, the city have invested some amount of money to improve this infrastructure. So we envision Florida Avenue sort of like a, a mixed-use neighborhood component with some commercial components. The most, this corridor has potential for urban mixed-use planned neighborhoods, which is a new future line use designation that I'm gonna talk about later. It will provide for the design, planning, and development of new mixed-use neighborhoods within the city's boundary. It will require an approved master plan, and it will promote standardized block sizes, mix of uses, and densities, which promote the traditional neighborhood development. The next one is the big corridor on Nolte. It's, um, this corridor, the designation for this corridor is employment future line use designation, which will address the employment line use needs in the city. This future line use designation will promote light industrial, commercial, and office uses. Currently, we're still analyzing this corridor for additional locations for this designation along, along the entire Nolte corridor. As we know, as, you may know that there are some plans by FDOT to make an, um, an exchange into Nolte from the turnpike. So that's what we're trying to capitalize with this employment areas. So, the commercial, as part of the strategic goals to create an effective job-housing balance in the city, the commercial and employment districts are expanded to achieve this goal. We expected that about five hundred and eight acres will grow in commercial by twenty forty-five. Forty percent of those is expected, uh, it is expected and the need is met in these changes, and the remainder is expected to be met in combination of the mixed-use policies, annexations, and increased intensities. And the industrial line uses, which are depicted as the new employment future line use, are expected to grow approximately one hundred and nineteen acres by twenty forty-five. And the professional future line uses are also expected to be increased by four hundred and seventeen acres. And this map changes propose exceeds these requirements to create that balance between jobs-housing ratio that the city is trying to achieve. The institutional uses, uh, or land uses have been increased, but mostly is to reflect the existing conditions within the city. What we had determined is that there is a lot of land, that they were not already designated institutional, but they were used for institutional uses. So we were just doing some cleanup with that. We didn't add any new institutional future line uses. Now, what are the biggest density and intensity changes? So this is the breakdown. For the, for the low-density residential, for the agriculture and the low-density residential, we didn't, we're not proposing any changes. It's gonna be up to four dwelling units per acre. Now, when it comes to my, medium-density residential, we're increasing it from ten to eighteen dwelling units per acre. So it will be from point zero one to up to eighteen dwelling units per acre. And the high-density, right now, our maximum is eighteen dwelling units per acre. We are proposing an increase to up to forty dwelling units per acre. It sounds scary, but it's not.
You think?
It's not, and I will, and I will show you how, it's not scary. Because that's, one of the things that I wanna emphasize with this presentation is that this is incremental. And I was gonna demonstrate that in further slides. For, um, for commercial that is outside the CBD area, we are allowing up to thirty dwelling units per acre. In the CDBD area, which is the downtown area, it is concentrated to be a maximum of sixty dwelling units per acre. But this is, again, it's when it's integrated with a mixed-use, and it's incremental. It's not like somebody can come here and build an eight-story building with sixty dwelling units per acre. That's not what this means. Employment, we don't have any density, uh, addressed to it, because it's not designated for residential use. But we have increased our FAR, the future area ratio, to one point five. From, um, well, it's a new designation, so we don't, so we don't have a previous one.
You meant floor area ratio?
Floor area ratio, that's correct. And I'm sorry, um, the employment future line use designation, it's a new designation that is going to act as a hybrid for industrial and youth office. Pretty much the market is gonna be driving the development of those future line uses. One of, that was a strategic move by staff to protect the integrity of those non-residential uses in the city. And I apologize, the two point five and four are the current FARs for those, for industrial and office. And for the employment, it's going to be four point zero, five zero. I was reading the wrong, the wrong line. For parking space, we have, did not make any changes, conservation makes no changes. The new urban mixed-use planned neighborhood, which we're still working on the name, so we are accepting requests, 'cause we wanna stay away from the nomenclature of mixed-use, since it's been so overused. So, but right now, this is the name that we have right now. So it is, it is, it's gonna allow twenty-five dwelling units per acre as maximum with an FAR two point five zero. The location for these areas, for the urban mixed-use planned neighborhoods, is going to be for, specifically for areas that will meet the criteria similar to Florida Avenue and Lake Shore. So, right now, we're still studying more areas around this, around the future line use map to where we can designate this future line use. And I'm gonna talk about, a little bit about those mixed-use planned neighborhoods. The low-density, we are adopting the low-density residential JPA, which is for properties that are going to be, that are within the JPA, and they're going to be annexed into the city. So they're going to be keeping their entitlements, the current entitlements from the county. As you know, the county right now, the future line use for LDR is a ma, uh, a minimum of eight. Ours is four. So what we're saying here is that if a, the, if a property gets annexed and is not developed into the city, it's going to have to be annexed with a four dwelling units per acre. If the property is already developed, sort of what we're doing with our encumbrance annexations, they are be able to utilize that eight dwelling units per acre. In that way, it's consistent, and we don't have to be creating PUDs and runarounds for these encumbrance annexations. So this is strictly for properties that are already, uh, developed, not fitted.
Simply because the county had a different restriction than the city. Simply because the county had a different restriction than the city had, so unable to annex those without changing anything, you had to make sure and have that as a...
So the transition will be most, it will be smoother. The same thing with the median density and intensity. We're just adopting the same policies as the county, just to have that smooth transition. Now, what is the incremental growth? So the incremental growth is to accommodate the growing of population. We know that the city is growing, and it's, it's, it's coming. Whether we want it or not, it's coming. So we can either let the market drive that increase, that density, and that development, or we can take control of it. So the changes, the policies and changes, the actual policies and changes that we are proposing in the future, in the, in the element, are going to be policies that is going to, in, what's the word I'm looking for, encourage that incremental growth. In that way, we can accommodate those growing population without having an impacted manner. A lot of the areas that we are proposing to exterior densities, you are going to notice that they are already, for the most part, developed. So what this is going to do is that a developer can, in ten years from now, can see a corridor in Nolte and say, hey, their house is here, one acre, one acre houses, but we have the connection to the Turnpike, we have the connection to 192. This will be a nice place to create some employment or office park. And then, they can approach those homeowners, and then that transition can happen gradually. Or those same owners can decide to increase their densities in their own properties and design products that would allow for that incremental, incrementing density. I know it sounds very, but, but it works, believe me, trust me. All right, so why the reasons of this increase? Like I said, it's to accommodate growing population and new employment opportunities. It also provides a redevelopment through offsetting higher costs and encourage infill development. It supports the jobs-housing balance that the city is seeking, and also increases the commercial intensities to support, again, that job-housing balance that we are looking for. And how will this density work? They're going to be, after this future line use element update, the next one that you're going to see is the housing element update, which is going to have policies that is going to encourage that incremental, that incremental density. And also, there's going to be land development code updates that is going to create design standards for those densities increment.
You know I was going to ask that.
Of course, and we know, and that's why we were, when we came up with it, we were like, why would Phil and Trish ask us? So yes, the land development code, we're hoping to bring the changes to the land development code by next year, we're hopeful, hopeful to that. And it's going to create the design standards, that is going to create, require improvements to the infrastructure, improvement to the roads, sidewalks, connectivity, all of those things that we want to see. So that's going to be, it's going to all work together. Right now, this is just the first part. Next step, right now, we are the workshop with, with the planning commission. This week and next week, we are going to be holding, well, like, it's probably going to be next week, we're going to be holding a city council briefing, one-on-one individually, to get the feel of the council and receive their feedback. After that, on August eighth, we're going to do our first public hearing transmitted to the state. This is a transmitter that we send the package to the state for comments. After that, if needed, we have a pending city council workshop briefing if needed. Our public presentation, once we do the transmitter and receive comments from the state, is going to be tentatively, well, not tentatively, it's going to be August fourteenth, and it's going to be here in City Hall. And further information is going to be provided in our website. We're working with our public information office to get that word out. On September seventeenth, we are coming to you with the final product for your action and a recommendation to the, to the council. And on October tenth is the adoption hearing in front of city council. And I think that concludes my presentation. And I'll be glad to answer any questions. If not, it's also, I have Dave Tomic here, Deputy. That might, I'll be able to answer some questions as well, but, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have or any recommendations you may have.
Can we go back to the increment that, with the picture that you showed with the increments? That one? So I'm looking at the fir, the top part of it, with the houses are spaced apart. Now, I could just picture just grass and trees and everything pretty in between it, and then I see less and less of that in the end. Is that our goal, is to kind of create?
No, this is, so this is the visualization of how incremental density works. The land development code is going to have regulations that is going to speak about open spaces and landscape requirements and buffers as needed. There are going to be areas in the city that are going to be intensified, yes. And that, that, those buffers and those landscaping are going to be minimum requirements. But there are other areas in the city that we acknowledge that there's going to be a more, a sprawl, that's what we like to call, development, which is going to have the more green spaces. So there is going to be a little bit of everything, at the end of the day, in the city.
So I'm, I'm really glad to see that you guys are working on this. I think this has been needed for quite some time. As we've, as we've all seen, you know, if we just let things happen the way they are, they do, right? It's very difficult to encourage the growth where you want it, right? Like you said, it's coming regardless, whether we want it or not. If we could start to steer it a little bit and encourage growth in areas where it makes sense, I think that, that's a good thing, and I'm glad to see you guys working on this. Yeah, because the reality is...
Is someone at the wheel or not?
This is private property, all this is private property. People can do what they want, with, within the confines of the zoning and, and that sort of thing.
One thing that I did not mention, after this, we're going to be having, well, we are currently having conversations with the county about the areas on the JPA. So we are working to create, to, to have the conversation of collaboration with the county to make some designations that will be for the benefit of the city before they get annexed. In that way, for example, if we see an area that we believe that is a great opportunity for a commercial node, and it's all residential right now, developed, then the conversation with the county right now is, hey, why don't you consider changing this future line use to a commercial future line use? So when it comes for the development, it already comes the way that we already envision it.
So the concept when we're steering this, like, if we're, like, even on, early on in the presentation, we were talking about changing some of the ones to, I think it was business, and some of them to a commercial. Does that also engage then with the changes that would need to be made with the roads? You know, because I think that's one of the problems we have right now, of course.
Correct. Those areas that we are proposing to increase the densities are areas that are ready, we're working with the transportation team and Public Works. We're not going to put an increase of density in Fifth Street, for example. Like, we're not going to say, okay, you're going to do high-density Fifth Street. Because Fifth Street, although it's going to be a framework street, it doesn't have the right-of-way to operate as an urban street. But one of the streets that we are considering is 10th Street. Because improvements to 10th Streets are going to happen, and it's going to be improved as an urban design, which could support a higher density. I'm not saying that it's going to be high-density, but it definitely can support a higher density than what they have right now. After those improvements are done.
Right now, yeah, I mean, right now, they still feel like, you know, farm-to-market streets, and we have all of this growth coming, and I think that's the biggest pinch point right now.
Yeah, and, and then also the message that the planning, that us, community development wants to give out to the public is that these changes are not going to happen in five years, ten years, maybe not even fifteen years. This plan goes all the way to 2045.
I think it's important to emphasize too, that you're not, you're not inviting the growth, you're trying to...
Control it.
Control, not control it either, but you're just trying to encourage the growth a certain way.
Steer it, manage it.
Prepare for it, if you will.
Correct. And then, in addition, like I said, in the land development code, there's going to be provisions that will require improvements to the infrastructure, because if you're going to be bringing a high-density product, we're going to be asking you improvements to the road to, to sustain that high-density product.
Does this help to avoid all the, oh, we want to rezone this, and oh, we want to rezone that, and oh, we want to rezone this, so people who know, if you're living near there, this is what you must expect?
Exactly. That's, that's our bigger goal. That's why I encourage this board, that I believe that the package was emailed to you to take a look at that map, and if you see areas that you feel, hey, this should, you should look in this area, you should look in that area, or I think this is a good area for this, please email me or email anyone in my team. Because we're still getting those feedbacks, especially from people that have been living within the city for decades, and know the city better than any of them, than me. And yeah, we encourage your feedback, that's why this is still a living document. We have, it's not a setting stone until October eighteenth. Because yes, in the future, what we want to avoid is this spot rezone, in the future line use changes.
When you talked about employment, you said you'd go into that, and I think you did a little bit. But what are we doing as a city to encourage that commercial? Like, we've talked before, like, okay, we have a Home Depot in one spot, so the whole city has to go to one Home Depot instead of encouraging it out, you know, on Harmony side or something. So the employment, is that the same thing that you're encouraging places that will employ more people? But what are we doing to help, to help inspire that?
So, good question. We are working with our economic, economic development department as well. They have a pro, they have a target industry program that Antoinette Ford is leading to attract those industries. Also, we are, we are working with them in creating locations for this employment nodes as well. She's, we are working in collaboration, she's doing a magnificent job, she's been working closely with us. And, and yeah, those things are being taken.
But is it like incentives, you know, discounts or whatever?
Yeah, there are programs that, for incentive, for target industries, that they are in place right now.
As long as they don't cause more taxes for those of us who are here.
I have a specific question about the employment use. Is, is that any different than industrial? Or is it just kind of another way to, to say it?
It is and it isn't. It is a different type of industrial, because again, there, in those areas, we want to encourage those targeted industries first. But, but there's going to be, but there's going to be more, like, those targeted research and, I think that's what he said, research industry in that clean industrial industry.
Can we, can we look at the map of the areas that were targeted for employment growth? Or employment uses, I should say? I want to ask about the triangle.
Yeah, right.
So this area, right now, there's only one way, if there even is one way to get in there. Until Clay Whaley goes through, I think it's Clay, no, no, it's...
Cross Prairie.
Cross Prairie, I'm sorry. So, but even when Cross Prairie Parkway goes through, and even in this map, there's only two act, it looks like two actual roads, future planned. And, and if it was only employment, I don't know if that area makes, if it makes the most sense, because you have one way, well, one, two ways in and out, right, essentially. But right now, that area is, there's nothing really developed there, right? So I assume that's why...
But that area is in the mixed-use area, which right now, only we have the Tohoku development that they have only built the single-family product, or the product type one of the community, or in type two, but in the community center has not been developed. Once the community center is developed, it's going to bring those rooftops.
Okay, so the idea is to sort of connect Tohoku to the Turnpike, and then the area in between to sort of encourage employment, is that correct?
And I was going to add, that's where the new interchange with Nolte.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That actually gives you some capacity.
Okay. All right, yeah, we'll, we'll study the map and give you some feedback on that.
Nice to see.
I'd like to vote for a Lowe's in that section. I'm with you, Don.
We need the rooftops.
An urban mixed-use, that was my other question. Urban mixed-use, looking for another word for that, is it because the mixed-use is overused or confusing to people? An urban, definitely...
That suggests more density, or more, I should say, mass, or larger form, usually when you think...
That's the planning, that's the planning definition, but I know what Ms. Commissioner, Commissioner Bruce Base is saying, that it can have a different type of connotation. And we're trying to look for creative ways to call these districts.
Can you give me an example right now of what is an urban mixed-use? Like, one that's live and kicking right this moment in our city?
Urban mixed-use in the city. The closest is downtown.
Probably not in St. Cloud, you have to use either Lake Nona or...
I have to have a draw picture.
Baldwin Park, or Celebration as an example.
Celebration.
Celebration, okay.
So it's a combination of the residential and the commercial kind of blended a little more?
And more, and more celebration, because Celebration does have that higher density in a concentrated area. It's not necessarily a bit more sprawl. And when I...
It's the walking neighborhoods, the neighborhoods where you, you want a, a walking neighborhood to be able to, you know, go out from your apartment, your townhouse, your whatever, and go and have dinner, and then walk home.
And it is also good to point out that as we were studying this for two years, I reached out to previous cities that I have worked with. I know that this was a implementation that Stanford adopted. We adopted this about eight years ago, eight, seven years ago. And if you haven't been to Stanford lately, I encourage you to drive by there. By the, by Stanford, from, from a lakefront. So that's...
So they adopted something like this? Because yes, I do go up there to the shows, the theaters down there, and Hall or Box.
Yeah, and also that Florida Avenue corridor is more, is envisioned sort of like what we, you see at St. Augustine with the bed and breakfast and the little boutiques and the retail.
Oh, that would be lovely. That would be nice.
That's their vision.
Nothing's like St. Augustine.
So back to the architectural standards, so that would be what would dictate or what would regulate the form and massing, right?
Correct.
So how would you... Because this is, this is something that happens incrementally, right? I mean, eventually, we can see areas by the lakefront or areas where these employment centers are, and having a lot of mass and, and a lot more size or form, right? But how do you incrementally, incrementally introduce that? Would the, would the architectural standards have something in them? That, like, the first person that says, hey, I want to, I want to build a mixed-use urban center here?
The form.
How would that be, how would the form be limited and the setbacks be limited? And would those change over time, based on, okay, now there's two, now there's three, now you can kind of adjust the setbacks maybe a little bit with the form a little bit?
Like, for example, let's, 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 let's talk about Lake Shore. Lake Shore, right now, they have a lot of houses that are facing Lake Shore Boulevard. And that is a missed opportunity for retail, for, you know, restaurants. And let's say that a homeowner has a property, I don't know if, if there's any one acre in Lake Shore, but let's say that there is a, there's an owner with a one-acre, single-family home. So he has the money to invest to maybe build another story into the home. And the second story is his bed and breakfast, and he expands his carport into a little breakfast area for the people that stay, four bedrooms, couples, that, and then you, you're parking, that, and then you, your parking, your parking will be a minimum requirement because you don't need as many parking spaces in these districts, because we don't wanna waste space. So, then you have your small parking area for those four couples that are staying in the bed and breakfast. And then their requirements of the buffering around will be also minimum, because it's supposed to blend. So the house is still gonna look like a house. It's just that it's gonna have that capability of having the nice four bedrooms on the second story and then a little coffin, not, the area for their breakfast and their carport.
And the city permitting and the, um, inspectors and all that are going to be really agreeable? Make that easy for these folks to do that? Now that I gotta see. No offense to anybody who watches this that, uh, hear me say that, but that is, uh, uh, that is always a challenge. Do, does floor area ratio, sorry to change the subject, but is floor ratio area mean that same as, um, you, you had said that earlier, and I don't really know what that means.
FAR.
I can answer that if you want. Okay, so floor area ratio is essentially, on any lot, you have X amount of space that you can build on, right?
It's called the heated portion.
So you have square, no, 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 just X amount of space, like gross area, right, square footage. So floor area ratio means is, as you build up, right, your total square footage can equal whatever the floor area ratio is, if it's four point five, it can equal four point five times whatever that, that original, uh, gross square footage is. Does that make sense? So you add up all the square footage of all the floors, so if you have a floor that's, let's say a thousand square feet, right? And you build up five stories, you're allowed forty-five hundred square feet.
Oh, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that I got.
Yeah, I was, uh, if you look at the picture, like, the sample, the student intensification, demonstrate, like, for example, let's say that all of those homes are in a one acre. So then that means that all of those homes can be, instead of doing it like this, you do it like this.
Mm-hmm, okay. But not on the lakeside, so that those poor folks are going to like get their lakefront?
And that, yeah, no, and that's why the, the policies of that, uh, future line use designation are going to be specific to those areas.
And bed and breakfast, you keep hearing you say that, but we're not really allowed to do short-term rentals in Saint Cloud, so that whole thing has to change too, right?
We're working on the land development code.
You can do short-term rentals right now in our town.
Yeah, there is an overlay.
But you have to have a bed and breakfast permit or a ability?
I can, I can get you in touch with T-Sides, you can give you a...
Yeah, I just really would like to know about that, because that is something that, being, again, in real estate, when people ask you, oh, can I rent, rent this out? Can I do Airbnb here? Well... But that's what people call it now, they use that terminology, thinking I can do short-term rentals on any of my properties in Saint Cloud.
But, but there is a definite difference between those.
Yeah, it's like, a bed and breakfast is more like a motel, type thing, only there for a few days.
Plus the owner's in the house usually.
The management is different.
I was in hospitality for thirty years, so people can use those terms very loosely. But it was the short-term rental issue in Saint Cloud, which, again, bed and breakfasts are different, I guess, in the city's depiction of that. Yeah, I'd like to learn more about that.
I think this is a big step forward though, for the city, and I think that it's a good thing that you're working on this, and even better that you're trying to coordinate with the county. So I think that's super important right now.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome. It's a pleasure.
Doug, we need a dog park. We need, we need a dog park.
A dog park. I'll work on that.
We do, we do need a dog park.
A big dog park? We have some dog parks.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Alright, does anybody else, are we all done? Alright, this time, uh...
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Well, well, before that, the next planning commission meeting is, what, August twentieth? Is that what we have down here? Alright, so then, uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, meeting adjourned.
Ms. Keegan, please turn in that sheet. Thank you.